Okay, I'd like to call this special committee of the whole meeting to order. It's Thursday, September twenty-sixth, five thirty P M. Eddie Colwell?
Cobb. Kuta.
Is here.
Metris.
Here.
Larson. Maddox.
He here.
Russell. Posh.
All right, well, we're here today to get a presentation from our planning director, Eric Zant, on ARPA funding, basically an update on ARPA funding. So we'll just turn it right over to you.
We've got a lot to speak about tonight. Stu?
Make sure you speak up.
Yes. So just to go quickly over the agenda, we wanna again remind everybody what we hope to accomplish tonight and remind the timelines that we're up against and deadlines. Talk about the work that we've done since our last work session on the sixteenth. Come back to the issue that's been brought up a number of times, which is the geographic distribution of funds and how we are making compliant with that. And then really the focus is focusing on those council projects and then revenue replacement reallocations so that we can, as you'll see in this next slide, finalize our ARPA plan. There's still a lot of work to be done, but we wanna make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of what we're rowing towards. So that's really the ultimate goal of the evening. Just as a reminder, there's been a lot of work on this, particularly since the beginning of the year and particularly since about March. And that includes, you know, all the work with the nonprofits and then getting the city projects and the council projects to the point where we're pretty close and a few work sessions with them all. Just as a reminder, October thirty-first is our internal deadline to get everything out bid and contracted so that we can meet that December thirty-first, twenty-second deadline or December thirty-first, twenty-two eighty-six deadline. So here's our first slide of updates and this is something that you all asked for last time. This is the status of the nonprofit projects. What they were approved for, the expenses or what they've built for to date through the end of August and then where their contract status is. And so just to run through it quickly and I can refer to law and finance on the details of this, but Benjamin Rose, that contract's been submitted to Margaret Wagner for their signature. So it's been agreed upon. Pride and Among Daughters and Sisters for the local feminine repository, that contract is signed and project's underway. They've received already a payment of twenty-eight fifty. Heights Libraries, which is the Coventry Peace Park Accessibility Project, the contract's signed. The next one is Star Right Home Center. I don't know why it's blank, but that should be contract signed and partial payment. They've received already fifteen thousand of the sixty. Cleveland Hesed Center, the contract is signed. Journey Center, that contract has been sent off to them for signature. Lake Erie Inc., contract signed and they've already billed or received twenty, almost twenty-six thousand. Culture Kids, the contract has been signed. Building Heights, the contract's signed and they've already received sixty-seven thousand. Reaching Heights, I'll defer this one over to Chris to explain why there needs to be some legislation related to that one.
Yeah, and I believe we touched on this during the last work session is that the proposals have sort of evolved since they were originally approved by council in December of last year. So we just need, we're gonna need council to approve the expanded scopes of some of the projects before there would be authority to enter the contract.
Family Connections contract signed. So Artful and Coventry Village, no, Artful is the same as Reaching Heights where there'll need to be some legislation. And the reason why that number, seventy-one thousand, is in blue is because that number will likely be slightly lower given the scope that they're talking about. Heights Arts, I think you all saw an email today from, or yesterday from the executive director. So they're gonna come back with a new scope and proposal and once we receive that, we're gonna contract with them. And then the Coventry Village Sid is waiting for input on the scope and funding for that one from, from there. So that's the status of where these projects are.
So what's the timeline for the, those pending last few there?
Well, the legislation for the expanded scopes can be ready next week.
Did you give them a timeline for getting stuff to you?
For, well, the Heights Arts is they're the only ones that are, that still need to prepare the new scope. But the other ones, it is just a matter of getting the legislation to council for approval so we can execute the contract.
So the ones that say reform scope, they're, they're just little tweaks?
Yes.
Okay.
Except for Heights Arts. I don't know what they're proposing.
Yeah, right, but yeah, that's not a tweak, that's a redo. Okay.
President Kuta?
Yeah.
We've had some questions from the citizens about the movement of the, talking about Star Right and moving to two hundred thousand out of infill and putting it all in with rehab. And so can somebody just give us a real quick brief as to why that didn't qualify or what was the rationale for that?
We can and it's, we don't have it on this, another slide, but we have another slide dedicated to Star Right and Future Heights.
Thank you.
So we can move off of this now if there aren't any other questions and get to those.
So for those that we will have to pass legislation for, so first, I'm assuming that there will be two readings. So first reading is on like October seventh. Second reading in passage would be two weeks later. So we have the goal of having the contract signed by end of October. Will the contracts be ready to go to them and do the nonprofits know, okay, we have a goal of having these signed?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, just so that they're not caught off guard and say, okay, we have this contract, now we need to review it and then, you know, that rolls into November and then maybe into December, just so that they're aware.
As Chris said, yeah, I think they're under that understanding, but we can also reach out to them and let them know that for sure. The number of readings is really up to council. I mean, your standard requirement is two readings, but you know, in exceptional situations or exigent circumstances, you can suspend readings and have a single reading and adopt as an emergency if that helps to get things signed more quickly.
So nonprofit housing projects, starting with Future Heights, this one's a little bit easier because they already had a five hundred and ten thousand dollar program or allocation from you. So we spoke about last time, they've agreed to focus that on rehab. And so we're working, our terms and conditions have been sent over to them and they need to provide the detailed scope to law to be able to finalize.
Can they use any of that money for staffing for the rehab?
So they could use it for any expenses that are directly related to the project. So I know they need to hire a, rehire a housing project manager. And if that project manager is completely dedicated to this project, then yes.
Okay.
And we did add in this middle bullet here, project manager or developer's fee. And we're, our understanding is that it's one or the other, but not both. And here's Star Right, so as we discussed last time and have discussed with Star Right is the, for the purposes of utilizing ARPA funds, rehabilitation is the path to take. And I'll turn it to, just to explain why, but just to finish up here. So it's similar to Star Right, terms and conditions have been transmitted to them and they just need to provide the finalized scope and we can work out a contract.
I guess the short version is that because of how quickly these funds need to be encumbered, program income requirements and additional flexibility that we get in the affordability covenants that have to go with the homes that benefit from the ARPA funding, we have an opportunity to get more homes with more forgiving income requirements by focusing on rehab now as opposed to doing something like dedicating two hundred thousand dollars to infill, which will get you exactly one house.
Chris?
So this change doesn't reflect, just for people who are watching, this change doesn't reflect a change in commitment to infill housing. The administration is still interested and committed to infill housing, but because of the particular constraints in this particular situation, we're taking a different approach.
Yes.
But are still interested in infill housing generally.
Yes, we are completely committed to infill, looking at our vacant lots. Star Right is of course welcome to be, continue to be part of that. So there really isn't much change outside of the use of funds.
Since they're gonna be spending most of the money or all of the money in rehab, will you all be looking at someone else to look at infill housing for that community?
So separate conversation, but we've spoken about having this request for expressions of interest. We've done it on a rehab side, but we're going to be issuing it for.
For, okay.
For all the vacant lots and as I mentioned earlier, Star Right will be able to bid on that, but so will other people.
Okay.
So the intention is we want homes in that neighborhood and all neighborhoods to be built as quickly as possible.
So, okay.
So I don't wanna drift, but I do wanna revisit the policy of the city, whatever we think collectively is best practices for infill housing. Because after looking at what, what South Euclid's doing and the economy of scale that goes with doing, you know, kaboom, as opposed to what nonprofits can do, which is one year goes by, you know, another one. I mean, is it even practical to be thinking about this? And if the answer's no, we probably need to, you know, kind of put that out there at some point. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting what the answer is, but I guess I am suggesting that when I, when I see how it's done right or successfully, put it more that way, I just don't see how this works any other way. So let's, let's please have that discussion.
Yes, absolutely. We just, this is mostly what we spoke about last time, but just a reiteration of the other sort of city projects, which are let us save. We've got that one million dollars divvied up between testing and then the actual remediation. So we'll be issuing an RFP. We've got that explainer that we sent you last time. That'll be through our HPO office. Down payment assistance, which is seven hundred and fifty thousand, HRC will do that. And there'll be a contract, which will be part of future legislation this year to encumber one fifty of that for them to do in bucket one. And then the remainder would be revenue replacement with the contract related to that. Exterior home repair, which is two point five million. HRC has the first million of that. So similar to down payment assistance, two hundred and fifty thousand in bucket one and then the remainder in revenue replacement. HPO would continue to do the home repair program with six hundred thousand of it. And then the driveway sidewalks, pathways, garages and trees program, which is about seven hundred thousand, split between the driveways, sidewalks and pathways, doing a concrete cost basis via an RFP bucket one. And then the remainder as a revenue replacement as a supplemental program. And then finally hiring somebody to assist us with all of that. And so we're, we're ready to go when we can to put that out.
So let me ask the legal department. I'm sorry, I actually lost my train of thought, so go ahead and if I think of it, I'll, I'll get back to you.
Moving off of exterior home repair is community investment fund, which is broken up into the comprehensive planning components and then the actual assistance. We spoke about this last time. There's a hundred thousand dedicated to Noble, a hundred thousand dedicated to Taylor. We have proposed and we agreed to doing a market study. We're ready to go with that because we have three cohorts on Noble Road, a traffic study on Taylor. And ODOT said they'll have comments by the end of this week, so that should be able to be released. And then an RFP for streetscape design for both areas, which we think we can get paying for our buck by combining those together.
I thought of mine. So the housing repair program, the exterior repair program was done, or at least my mind was done because we were trying to help homeowners who had suffered financially from COVID and, you know, maybe weren't able to do some repairs. Is there any way to use some of that money to retroactively reimburse people who would otherwise be qualified? In other words, a one-twenty AMI or you're shaking your head?
So when you enter, when you do a federal project, there's all the front issues that you need to do prior, like a store approval, an environment review and all that stuff that happens.
I see, yeah, I didn't think of that part of it, but, okay.
And on the business assistance side, which is sort of that direct assistance as we spoke about, we're gonna divvy it up between a third party assistance to help us encumber funds and get some of those out immediately and then a longer term city program. So we're working on both of those and of course we'll share those with you.
These are still loans, are they still loans?
They might end up being grants.
They may be grants.
Yeah, we haven't figured that part out yet.
Okay.
And.
To go back to the exterior repair slide we're pretty used on. And to hear, to listen to what Chris said, when people apply for that, I'm assuming we're gonna do a rollout and they, they know the application forms and all that will be available. Will we be looking at a timeframe in which they would have had to have that exterior repair cited? Or I mean, how do you determine if it was COVID related or not in those circumstances?
Yeah, when it's revenue replacement, it doesn't need to be.
Okay.
And affordable housing in general.
Okay.
By assisting someone at a hundred and twenty percent AMI or below, you're preserving affordable housing.
Okay, alright.
The Treasury Department says that they assume that if your income is below a certain level, you are negatively impacted by COVID.
Good to know, thank you.
Is there an age component to this as well, if you're over a certain age, do you qualify or?
So certain federal programs that already exist, if you meet those requirements and age is one of those components, then you can, like I know there's, is it Title One? What's the HUD assisted living?
Section two oh two.
Yes, like section two oh two programs are eligible.
So when we market this, we'll market it accordingly, right?
Yeah, I don't think we intended on having an age restriction on the ARPA funds, but there are additional funds through C D B G for the people in that scenario, for seniors. There's a double subsidy for seniors versus.
Well, I'm not talking about restriction, I'm talking about eligibility.
Oh, okay.
That's what, yeah.
There wouldn't be an age requirement for eligibility, right?
That's not what we have, we're.
Right.
Right now, yeah.
The C I C, that's, it is really a nonprofit, so that agreement's being drafted and that's ready to come forward.
Clarification, this funding was for twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, right?
Yeah.
So that three hundred thousand, would it really just be used for twenty-five, twenty-six?
At this point.
And so it's okay to evenly divide it between those years, one fifty, one fifty? Okay.
Yeah, it was.
I wasn't sure if we were locked into using it over that period and, you know, one-third, if you didn't use anything during twenty-four, then one-third of that would have to go somewhere else or?
I don't think it was that restricted.
Okay.
I don't think the only intention is salary. I think there's a hope that there's enough money to acquire.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then our parks project. So we spoke a little bit about this last time, but we have a lot more information. So just to run through the bullet points, the proposal is really to focus on Kane Park and Dennison Park. We'll show you how in a second. Just an update on the Compton Road Greenway Pocket Park, that's completed. But the mini roundabouts projects are coming soon. Director Klinske, that's in a couple of weeks, they said they are gonna start that project.
Yes.
So there's gonna be some reallocations to the Dennison Park project. And you'll see with Kane Park, we have a proposal that exceeds what's been allocated, but we have a, have a suggestion of how to meet that, that budget. So with that, I will turn it over to the Parks team here to walk through the Dennison Park turf project and its components.
So. Dennison turf project components broken down. We've got turf field replacement approximately one point one million. And then turf park maintenance equipment, around twenty, just shy of twenty-four thousand. Electrical upgrade about twenty-five thousand. Soccer field equipment, that would include goals, brand new goals. And then demolishing the, demolition of existing storage facilities and to make way for the storage of maintenance equipment.
Mr. President, just, just briefly for the public, could you just explain again why we're replacing or the need to replace that turf field?
Oh, yes. Last meeting, I had mentioned that originally Dennison, that plain surface was natural grass. And it was just, it, when we would get torrential downpours in the fall, early spring, the field just could not absorb enough of that water and it would be unplayable for, for days after. Additionally, it would make for dangerous field conditions. You cannot play any athletic events if you have a significant amount of standing water on it. And eventually if you did try to play, the amount of people would just turn it over and would turn it into just a field of mud. Also moving the portable goals and if you did put any field equipment on the field, would create butts that are just, you know, would present additional field hazards. Going with the turf made a ton of sense from the standpoint of if we do have inclement weather, you could have a torrential downpour at six A M. and by nine A M. you're, you're out there playing. And also it's one of the premier facilities in northeast Ohio. It's European sized, so it allows us, gives us many opportunities to do a ton of different, you know, types of events and that type of thing. So initially, I think we installed that back in twenty-ten. So at that time, I think we were given a lifespan of roughly.
Ten years.
Ten years. And in addition to, we have Coach Sullivan with us tonight, who is an expert in, you know, the soccer community and things. And he may be able to expand a little bit more on what I've just said.
First of all, thanks for the opportunity to be here. I'll just give you a little bit of insight to who I am. I'm a long time Cleveland Heights resident, I've been here since nineteen seventy-eight. Went to Noble School, Monticello and graduated from Heights High in eighty-eight. And then I was a Heights soccer player eighty-five through eighty-eight, loved every minute of it. When I came back from college, I became a teacher here. I've been a teacher in the district for thirty-one years and I was also a soccer coach. I kind of worked my way up the ladder as a coach, both as a volunteer for the youth programs and then with the travel soccer program called the Eastside Kickers. And then as I became more, I had more time with the system here, I ended up forming my own soccer academy, it's called the Heights United Soccer Academy. So we started that in about the year two thousand. That was the year that the city soccer program kind of dissolved. It used to be run through the Board of Education, they're called Community Services. And so I, I built a bridging program from the rec league to the travel soccer. And eventually when I became the head coach for Heights High, those kids would be moving up the pipeline and I had a good sense of who they were and all the families knew who I was. My investment in Cleveland Heights is really very strong. I've been fortunate enough to be named Teacher of the Year in the district. I was actually Coach of the Year for the state of Ohio. And recently I was inducted in Cleveland Heights High School Hall of Fame with the Kelsey River. So it's, it's been something very special for me. My academy, so far we have had over ten thousand children come through. So in the last twenty years, so we really affect a lot of kids. But I can speak firsthand to what Chris is saying, because I was there for the dedication of the field in two thousand and ten. We played Chardon that day, we had the Heights High marching band come down, it was an amazing experience. And as head coach over all those years, every team that came through was just amazed at, at the quality of the field and the width of the field and it's unlike anything else that the kids have ever experienced before. So we had a lot of people asking us, you know, would you be interested in hosting, hosting state tournaments here? The only thing that kind of held us back was just the, the amount of seating that we could have. There's a, you have to have like around a thousand seats available and be able to host something above a district level tournament. But there is such great opportunities to host tournaments for younger kids and there's a huge demand for soccer, not just in our city, but around the surrounding communities. I personally have provided scholarships, over a hundred thousand dollar scholarships for our kids to come through. So it's really important to me, I'm heavily invested in this community and for our children. And I invite any one of you to come out on Saturdays, come see our three hundred kids out there. We have a very unique flavor, the way we do it. All my coaches are Heights graduates, very dedicated to our community. And it's something unlike you'll see anywhere else, so please come out and visit us. But what Chris was saying before, I also coached on that field before it became turf. And we had to cancel many games or even forfeit games because the field was unplayable. So soccer players can't play in standing water because that's really very dangerous and kids can get their ankles caught in the mud and twisted and much worse. So I was one of the advocates for this program long ago and had an opportunity to present, you know, two thousand eight, two thousand nine importance of it. And I can tell you firsthand, over a hundred thousand people have been on that field. I've never heard anything negative about it, it's, it's a beautiful conference. So I appreciate your support and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm always available for any questions.
Mike, you should have the current conditions to serve their day today.
Um, right now, there are, you know, very, very visible seams. The blades of grass are coming up. The, the, like pellets, as I wanna call them, those are the, the actual pellets in the turf that so when you're planting, your foot doesn't stick, okay? So you doesn't, you know, ACLs, MCLs, everything like that, you know, those are getting all bunched up and everything like that. The, the crown is actually not crowned anymore, if you wanna say that. So, and we do have some spots where the turf is coming up and there's, you know, you know, some visible small holes and everything like that. Also, I would like to add, it's just not soccer programs that use that facility.
Right.
I mean, you, I wanna say probably about eighty-six percent of these high school, junior high, middle school, four and five-year-olds use that. From T-ball, we have T-balls in there. Our T-ball program in the summertime is there every Wednesdays. We have our Heights U football program that uses it when it's available. Eastside Kickers, Heights JV girls and varsity boys soccer. We've got Monticello girls middle school and Roxboro middle school lacrosse on there. When we start our baseball program, if we cannot practice at Forest Hill, I'll move practices from Forest Hill to Dennison where I can put four teams at a time out there to actually practice because it's, you know, like, you know, Coach Sullivan said, it's a European sized soccer facility. You know, you name it, these kids have been on it, these kids love it, everything like that. It would be, it would be huge for the city, that's all I'm saying, huge, huge.
I stopped by Dennison today over my lunch break and the pickleball and tennis courts look incredible. The turf field wasn't open, but like from the perimeter, it looked pretty good. So would it be possible for someone maybe to like take us out there and like show us like the wear and tear? Show us like some of the challenges that you're facing?
Forgot the keys with the car.
Okay. Yeah, that would be possible, I think that would be really helpful.
Sure.
Um, it sounds like this is going, should take place sooner rather than later. So do you have a timeline in mind in terms of when you're gonna be able to do the project to reinstall, to put the new turf down?
If we could tomorrow, if that makes sense.
Or yesterday?
Or, or, or about three weeks from now, because the high school season will be over with and everything like that. We probably get rocking and rolling last week of March, first week of April with programs with, you know, again, Heights High School baseball, they call them, hey Mike, you know, our field's not available. Do you think we can get on Dennison's turf field to practice? Absolutely, you can.
Does it have to be put out to, to bid? Does it have to be put out to bid? So do we, is there some way to authorize that so we can get this rolling if there's a consensus among us or is there a waiting period? I just kind of like to know.
We're currently looking into a cooperative purchasing program.
Okay.
So that bidding wouldn't be required. Doesn't mean that it couldn't go that way, but we think it's going to be quicker and easier to get there in a timely way.
All right. Thank you. This is very helpful.
I want to thank you all so very much. The presentation even from last time you were here talking about the soccer field and even this time. People have talked about that field for a very long time, about needing repair and all of those different things, especially in the the Rec Advisory Board. They have been talking about that field at Denison for a while. So I'm just happy that things are going to take place. I've been out there. You are absolutely right. It has cracks in it. It's, it's, it needs, I'm gonna say bad, but it needs a lot of help. And the pickleball is static, is static, is static. I can't tell you how many meetings I've been in and they talked about the pickleball. And we were overly slammed with people talking about pickleball. So I'm very happy. It looks very good. So I am totally one hundred percent in favor for whatever you can do to make Denison Park shine.
Oh, go ahead, Chris. Cal.
Yeah, question. The recreational improvement fund that has been coming out of the taxpayers' property taxes over the years. What has been done with that fund in terms of setting aside money for habitualities like having to replace this turf field? And with the tennis courts, the skating rink, where has that money been going over the years?
Directing it to a certain person?
I guess I'm just asking that question. I don't expect an answer right now, but I think that it's an answer that we need to, that we need to, to have. And I, I'd appreciate some documentation being provided to City Council as to where that money has gone over the last, let's say, four or five years.
We can definitely get that information for you, Councilman Cal. I know that the previous director, Joe McCray, he had tried to establish a contingency with those monies over time to address some of those things that you just brought up. Such as, you know, various capital projects over, over, you know, over time. And trying to create, you know, prioritize, you know, some of those things over, you know, over the course of the years. I know this past year, we did have some, some money set aside to do some work over at the Cumberland Pool that we ended up not, not using. I think three hundred thousand dollars were set aside specifically to do some upgrades to the Cumberland Pool boilers. Nothing, nothing's been done with, with those funds this year. I know that the former director engaged in a couple of public meetings about the future of Cumberland Pool, about potential redesigns to the pool. And I think, I don't know if that entered into his mindset as to why we didn't pull the trigger on doing some of those boiler upgrades. Assuming that within a couple of years, that we may be doing some, you know, big time renovations over there. It didn't make sense maybe to utilize those funds. But to your greater point, we can definitely go back and I can take a look at past, you know, past five years and give you a breakdown of what those capital funds were used for.
Wasn't some of the money set aside or was going to use for the pickleball prior to?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we better move on. So there's more detail in this presentation of the different elements. We don't have to spend time on them. But they're in here. And if you have any questions, of course, the team is here. But we wanted to stop here for a second and just talk about how to get to what's ultimately about one point three million dollars worth of improvements. So that includes a complicated calculation of what's left in the Denison allocation after the pickleball project. The remaining funds from the Forest Hill Park allocation which have not been utilized. The remaining funds from the all parks quote unquote. After the Compton Road Greenway monies are subtracted, but based upon the real costs, not the allocated cost. And then the shipping container and parks, parks vehicle fleet replacement component. So that gets us to a little over one point three is what the project was budgeted for, has been estimated at. Switching.
You talked last time about the pilot project for the shipping containers. Councilor Maddox, were we gonna still leave that in the calculation? So it's going to roll over into whatever we can.
No, that, that was already reallocated. Yeah, we did that.
So, so that's, you're just listing out what we decided to reallocate.
Right, yep. And that's along with the second project ready to need to, both those have already been.
Thank you.
And there's another slide, I believe, that shows that.
Yes. What we did want to talk about a little bit is Kane Park because this is part of the parks improvements that we didn't have much detail last time. And so you have two point four million allocated towards Kane Park. See here, here's essentially four projects that were identified initially in the allocation and an update on them. So I don't know if Bill or Chris or Jerrah, you wanted to walk through it, but it's sort of self explanatory. The roof repairs for the Evans Amphitheater. We have an executed contract with TMA and that's being performed at four hundred, four hundred thirty two thousand.
That was another cooperative, the Association came in.
Yes. Heart design has been brought on board. You approved that contract. They're looking at the office and dressing room upgrades. So that design works underway. The estimate is about a million dollars for that work. So that's why we have that in there. And then two other things that were in the allocation that we're working on is the seating replacement for both the Evans and the Alma. Estimated at approximately nine hundred thousand. And those options are being reviewed. And then new sound lighting and video, which is something we spoke about a little bit last time, estimated actually under four hundred thousand, but we built in a little bit of room there. So if you tally that all up, it actually comes to two point eight million, which is above the two point four million. But we've got a slide later on of where we think we can make up that gap. Go ahead.
I saw that Congresswoman Chantel Brown announced that we are receiving almost four hundred thousand dollars for Kane Park. Do we happen to know where that money would be spent? Was three hundred ninety thousand dollars?
That's for the LWCF fund, I forget what that stands for, but it's through ODNR. And it's in the proposal that was written by the previous parks director. It was for upgrades to the skate park and the bat and the tennis courts.
Okay.
Uh, one thing we want to do is just explore how rigid that needs to be.
Okay.
Given that we're doing some park master planning and we have all this new energy for the parks. But the good news is that it's going to go towards Kane.
Okay.
And actually, that was my question because I talked to Sharon Brown this weekend and he had just told me that you were giving half a million dollars to Cleveland Heights. So I wanted to make sure what part of that funds, he did tell me what part of that funds was going to, it was the Kane Park area and making sure that it wasn't an overlap with the ARPA funds.
Yeah, the way that, that, that's, that was proposed, it doesn't overlap.
Okay.
So we'll just make sure that happens.
Okay.
Great news then.
So again, we'll come back to in a few minutes where we think we can make up that gap. Uh, we know that this has been a topic really throughout the entire process, but we wanted to sort of hit it home. Ordinance number ninety two twenty twenty one, which is the ordinance that talks about the geographic distribution of funds. Has two important components that no ARPA funds in the city could, can be spent until these two conditions are met. The first one being is that the service department employees who are furloughed or had work hours reduced are made whole. That's section one of it. And that was completed probably back in twenty twenty one.
Yes.
And then the second part, which is the topic of discussion is council directs, this is the quote, directs and funds economic development assistance in business, residential and infrastructure, leave of allocation assistance. And the amount that less than five million dollars is follows. Two million to South Taylor, two million to Noble Road, and then one million across the rest of the city. So we took a shot at documenting the funding that's been allocated to these districts. And then earmarks that we're proposing to make sure that the future funds for lead safe and down payment system, the exterior repair and small business assistance are going specifically to these neighborhoods. And so you can see that if we do this, we're way well over the two million that we need to accommodate in both areas.
It's DPA?
DPA is Down Payment System.
Okay.
So again, if we say at least two hundred thousand of down payment assistance is going to go to Noble Road, at least two hundred is going to go to Taylor Road, then we're, we're fulfilling the, I think, the intention of that original group.
Mr. President?
Yes, please.
This is, this is great for the general public to be able to see this and see that investment. I know since we've been having that ARPA conversation and getting that feedback, having this breakdown, I think makes it crystal clear the investment that the city is making in these areas. The fact that we've exceeded those expectations is just awesome.
So each one of these represents a portion of what's being spent. You know, and, and there's an aggregate that's larger than all these.
Right.
These.
Those earmarked.
Yeah, the earmarks, yeah.
And even using just a different example, so sewer and water, we have eighteen million overall. So about six million here is that key to these two corridors.
Okay, yeah, yes.
I agree with what Councilman Mac said. I think that this is very clear, very helpful. Is it possible to put this on the website so that like residents can see this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we know it's a question that people have been asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, I need to.
Go ahead.
I like that you have it listed that way, but I'm just going to be the devil advocate and I don't think it's very clear for what the residents were asking for, wanting for the two million dollars. It looks like the sewer and water, we allocated that money prior to. So to me, that should not actually be in there because the whole city is actually getting benefit from that. Denison improvements, I think what the residents were looking for were, were not quite what's listed there. I think it was something somewhat different. But I appreciate that he listed it out so they can actually look at it and whatever feedback you can get from the community with that, they will be able to bring it up in the way they see fit. But I, because I don't see anything that advocates for the community itself, the residents itself. But you can move forward.
Uh, so this is really the, the main event is we wanted to really get back to the council projects and then talk about ultimately impacts. This is the same slide we had last time. Just want to make sure, are we still pursuing the allocation? Yes, remind ourselves. We need to know exactly what it's about and, and remind ourselves of the deadlines. If not, then it can go into the reallocation discussion. So here are the four projects, the shipping container project, which we've already discussed, moving to the turf project, the park vehicle enhancement, turf project, and then the tiny home pilot project and the safety lighting slash police blue light. Before we talk about them, it actually makes sense to talk about revenue replacement for a second. Remember, it's ten million dollars added thirty eight million. And we've been advised by Pricker to have about a two million dollar issue offered, so about eight million. So here is a tally of projects that are assigned right now to revenue replacement. And I know there's a lot on here, but we can go through it line by line. So the first five, including the CIC, are the nonprofits that because of either timing and or what the scope is, they don't fall into a bucket one. And so therefore, those are full revenue replacement. The amount that was allocated is the amount that's being assigned to revenue replacement. Then we get to police equipment. That's a full revenue replacement because it doesn't fall into any other category. Then when we get to the housing programs, lead safe, down payment system, exterior repair. Those have some components that are revenue replacement, most of them, but some of them we think, as we've discussed, can happen within twenty twenty four and twenty twenty six. So that's why there's a difference in some of those numbers. Similarly with the, so the community investment fund planning, that's all planning. It falls into revenue replacement regardless. And then the, the actual assistance, the third party assistance, we're trying to accomplish that in twenty twenty four and twenty twenty six. But the longer term needs to be revenue replacement. And then we've got the tiny home project, the safety lighting project listed here for right now. And then the two garages. We believe that the Lennox Suri garage is all revenue replacement, given what's happening there. But the Coventry garage, particularly because there's some elevator and ventilation components to that. We're estimating that fifty thousand of that could be bucket one and the remainder being revenue replacement. The new police cars are all revenue replacement. The ice rink, unfortunately, is all revenue replacement, but it's, the project came in lower than allocated. Uh, and then the vehicles are also revenue replacement. And then the strap, which had been adopted as a revenue replacement project. Pricker has determined is eligible to be bucket one, so we zeroed that out. And then the shipping container parks pulling down. So long story short, is you can see the two totals there, there's thirteen million dollars worth of projects. Nine point three million dollars worth of revenue replacement. So it's under the ten million, but we're trying to get to eight.
And that, and that's even considering that bucket six, that, I don't know, the one that was added. It's kind of like, pretty broad, like even if we.
Well, that's really surface transportation and.
There's not really anything else.
Yeah, surface transportation, broadband, infrastructure. Things that were basically added after the act was initially passed.
So none of this though?
So none of these fall into that category, unfortunately. So with that acknowledgement that we still are under the ten million, but we're not at the eight million that we want to get to. Here's what we're suggesting and this is where we want to have a conversation. So for the tiny home project, hey, you know, we're behind that and I think we just, we discussed it last time.
Adding more money to it.
And looking at, at larger residential zoning. So looking at tiny homes definitely, but some of our other typologies, it's something we're very supportive of. But we think we can do that if we do it as a actual project in the general fund in twenty twenty five. So pull it out of ARPA, but just put it into our budget for next year, whatever the number is, if it's a hundred and seventy eight or two fifty, which I know is the original request. And then we could then apply those at a hundred and seventy eight towards the Kane Park improvement gap, which is all bucket one eligible. So we would begin to solve our revenue replacement problem. And then on the safety lighting, police blue light, I'm just going to read what's on the screen here. We recommend allocating this funding because the police chief and the mayor are opposed to the blue lights because of efficacy, public space, safety trends and technology. And so we could reallocate that towards Kane Park, you'll see on the subsequent slides. But in a similar way, if safety lighting is something that we're interested in looking at, then let's look at that in the budget process in a similar way. So we can make that commitment.
I was just going to say to you, I did meet with the chief and he wanted me to give him a few days to investigate some things. And I told him I would. And so if you could give us, give me to maybe a next week or so, then I can just tell you we found we come up with something or we just move it like you like you're asking.
Yeah, this is this is the the council's decision at this point.
Yeah, no, I I just wanted you to know, uh we did have a conversation.
How much time are we talking here for for that? I know she's having a conversation with the chief, just so that we're clear on this. When you need to know about the allocation. So if we do need to come back together, I just wanna make sure that you got those steps too.
It's as soon as possible, although I was just thinking about this before the meeting. Ultimately, we're gonna have to bring a bunch of legislation before you. So we can make some assumptions in some of that legislation, which gets changed either before it actually appears before you and or you change it. Which read?
Okay.
Right, that's that's true. I think time is also, when we talk about this.
And I can always, I mean, we don't even have to meet for that, cause I can email Addie and say one way or another, she can let our council know, and that could be a that could be.
Well, you should, I I think you should take that up in the context of legislation so that you're having an open conversation in.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying not uh just what the decision comes back from the chief. If the chief says, oh, I think we could use it here, or it could be used there, then that will be fine. If it's nothing that.
And the latest information that we were provided is that.
My recommendation would be to council then to move it based on what your recommendation is. And then, I mean, if everybody thinks that's the same way already, it's basically saying, hey, giving me an opportunity to talk with the chief and see what he comes back with, all I'm doing is just emailing her just saying, just let go or no go.
Yeah, I don't know if if the if the chief's uh we, I mean, the information that we were provided is that he does not support this through ARPA at this time. But that's also where the third bullet comes up because the the time is sort of the underlying portion, right? We got, you got into this a little bit last meeting, and there's questions about campuses removing these, people making changes, questioning the efficacy. You made arguments about why it's a legitimate use. I think our feeling is that can be explored um in the future, but to work that out, to draw up plans, develop specs, go out to bid, by the end of this year seems, I think, impossible to us.
I guess that's not what I was actually saying.
Okay.
Okay, so what I was actually saying was, we did, we discussed all of this, and all of that was on the on the um screen last meeting. That and the mayor was here saying that, you know, and then the ma- the chief walked in. I met with the chief after that to figure out or s- see if there was something else that uh regarding safety that his department may need or want or could use it for. And he said, give him a few days, he would check and look into that. So I'm just trying to give him an opportunity to get back to me to say, maybe these are funds that we can move to the the police department for something else. So that's all I'm saying. It's not a plan to create anything, it's just saying, well, okay, maybe he wanna add another vehicle that Anthony was talking about. So maybe we wanna move that to that, but I wanted to give him an opportunity since it's around safety to see if there was something else in his bucket list that he may need.
That's fair. We were looking at safety lighting and police blue light, which was the the discussion.
Yeah, but after you all, after discussion last week, I pivot and said, hey, let's.
But that required, it it that's gonna require other changes to your fundamental legislation as well. So I think you guys, you guys need to sort of.
No, I I know, I understand. I just wanted to be able to give him an opportunity to say whatever or.
So let me ask a quick question about the, you know, this urgency thing. If if this money goes into revenue replacement, listen, I'm not looking to kick the can down the road. What I wanna know is what the parameters are. And if we put it in revenue replacement, couldn't, could we not decide first that that would be in legislation in council, there would be something in there that says whatever programming or usage of it comes, has to go through council. Even though it's money in the general fund, that amount of money would have to go through council as a, you know, similar uh assimile to to ARPA fund projects. So that just in case we couldn't necessarily come up with a particular project right now, we could still have the money in council's purview to to make a decision later. Is that not true? If it goes into revenue replacement?
So it depends on what you mean by going into revenue replacement. You could earmark something for revenue replacement, and so long as those funds sit in the account with the the fund with the other other monies, that earmark can change. Once the money is obligated and then pulled out, then locked in.
Yeah, right, right. Right, no, I I know. But what I'm saying is, what if we can't earmark it right, you know, in a expeditious way? Could we still have the money set aside, un earmarked? Sorry, I don't have terminology for this.
Earmark later.
Uh uh until when?
To earmark it, to earmark it later.
Until when?
Uh until we decide how we wanna use it.
Would you be deciding how to use it before December thirty first of this year?
You'd have to.
Yeah, that's right. That's, that's what I'm looking for.
I'm like, yes. Because once revenue replacement, we move salaries and stuff, it goes basically into the general fund, we're moving money out of the general fund. But you, you know, can't just have it set there.
Okay, alright, December thirty first, I understand. Go ahead.
So we've been talking about trying to reduce that nine point three number down to eight million. Um so with these two um projects, the tiny home and the safety light, we're not talking about moving those to another bucket, we're just eliminating those, right? That's, and we're talking about these projects maybe being done in the future using budgeted money in future years, right? So we're just reducing our allocations by a million dollars here.
Reducing the revenue replacement.
But so so, I mean.
Did you wanna put it towards?
But we still have thirty eight million dollars overall.
We still have thirty eight million, because you'll see in a few slides, we're proposing to reallocate funds towards.
Kane Park.
Kane Park, which is bucket one.
Okay, so these two, that money, if freed up, would be transferred to another bucket where it would be spent on Kane Park.
Which wouldn't be.
Which is a staff recommendation, right there.
So no money is.
Okay, 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 I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're trying to.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Let's do the subsequent slides.
Um so just a reminder, and this is actually a ref- refinement from last time, there's really three different ways we can go here. Traditional revenue replacement, which is, uh we spoke about, a project that doesn't fall into a bucket. That still has to be uncovered by twenty twenty four, spent by twenty twenty six, so that's the nonprofits. If we go and we pay salaries, that's removed from ARPA and placed into the general fund. He still needs legislation to do all that, and they must be paid by twenty twenty six, cause it has to be within the time period. And then we floated this idea last time, and we have some ideas about this of, well, if we just replace projects with something that we could accomplish today, we can use ARPA funds for a new, a new project and do this other project in a general fund way, which is sort of what we were talking about on the previous slide. So this is where we're at, and we'll walk through it. We think there's about one point three million dollars in funds that are available for reallocation. That includes about sixty seven thousand dollars remaining from the ice rink rebuild project. The welfare police training um allocation is something that uh and uh Harry can speak to this. The chief isn't ready to do this year and get into um contract this year, so it's just gonna be built into the twenty twenty five budget. The art for allocation, there's about four thousand dollars that we know is um gonna be a delta there. There was two hundred and thirty one thousand approximately originally unallocated. And if you include both of the other projects, the tiny homes and the safety lighting, that gets you to one point three million dollars. If you take those two out, then it's uh, what's my math, about five hundred thousand or so. What we're proposing or suggesting to spend that money on is that delta, that four hundred thousand dollar delta for Kane Park. So that could happen with or without tiny homes and um and the safety lighting, cause there's a little bit more there. There's a sanitary sewer repair phase two that Dr. Klink scale is ready to go with, and if you wanted to speak about that one for a second.
Sure, when we, when we had our so- sanitary sewer system evaluated, we had a phase one and a phase two. Where we, where we would move throughout the city and do spot repairs, replace certain sections of the water main, I mean, of sewer mains, what have you. So when we bid a phase one, we bid the worst of the worst areas that we wanted to take care of. But we also had a phase two that we were looking at to do some relining of our sanitary sewers throughout the city. That we weren't, we had it like in our back pocket if we needed to do it, since the same engineer did the survey, we just divided the survey into two phases. So the second phase, the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be to do some sanitary sewer relining throughout the city.
And that includes the construction management.
Right.
Involvement, which is important for it.
Right.
Uh and then with the remaining amount, and I hate to say it that way, but um two hundred and fifty thousand dedicated to like required ADA improvements that we need to do for bathrooms and roots, routes and pathways based upon section five oh four.
Examples.
In all the parks?
It would be in as many as we could accomplish.
So we would start with, so we, as a proposal for some major changes to these parks with federal funds, uh requirement of federal funds. Those facilities need to be accessible to uh people with disabilities. So for example, uh if we do the term of replacement, there's probably stands there that need to be updated that were installed prior to the ADA. Um there's probably a route that may be substandard that takes you there to be the, you know, a um watcher, what do you call that?
Spectator.
Spectator, there you go.
Jan.
Yeah, man, really.
Luger.
Yeah, watchers, absolutely, a star data. So there's other, and there's other improvements that um could be made, should be made, you know, as a commitment to be inclusive to all our residents. Um a lot of these parks were built before the ADA, so um they weren't required to be necessarily changed right away, but um it's been thirty years and there's a lot of improvements that need to be made. So we've gone through multiple parks and found, identified a very large budget, and we'll be asking, uh we've asked for CDBG funds for next year, and we'll probably make that a recurring um thing with CDBG, not that most of the curb ramps have been.
So you, so you're saying legally we're grandfathered in, but when it comes to, or you're not saying that?
We're not saying that.
Okay.
No, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just trying to not place blame with.
You're saying it's been thirty.
Cleveland Heights Boys of the eighties.
So how much more would it take to bring all of the bathrooms and everything up to ID?
It depends, it was all, that's a big question. I mean, are we talking about just modifying current bathrooms or um?
Under construction.
Doing new.
Yeah, we don't have a number at this point.
We don't have, right.
More than, more more than fifty, though.
Right, what I'm just saying, if we have more money to move, wh- why not move it to making uh make it accessible for our residents who really need it?
Well, this is just.
You've gotten leasing together a lot of different money sources for this.
This is the, this is the moved money.
No, I understand that, but move more of it.
From where?
We're expecting.
This is it.
That's what we're saying, this is it.
This is the total.
Yeah, there's no, yeah, there's nowhere else to.
This is the quote unquote extra.
You'd be moving in from some other project that you're aware of.
Yeah, we can.
She's saying in lieu of one of these other projects?
Mm-hmm.
Uh we're, we're using sort of like a multi-pronged attack of budgeting or funding.
Okay.
Use uh proven, so CDBG rests with one fifty for twenty twenty five. I would expect that would get through the CAC and council. Um there's additional fifty thousand we applied to the county from their CESG program. Um there's also some reallocated funds, so the Kane Park playground is likely to be uh postponed till after the
Master Plan.
Park master planning.
Mm-hmm.
So that fund will, th- those funds could be reallocated for additional ADA.
And then we're gonna have another capital requests for this upcoming, we will have some ADA stuff, so we're gonna tackle it over time.
Some of it is the idea, I guess, so that'll take up some.
It's a good place to spend money.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Pathways alone could be up a large, just in pavement.
And one important consideration to all that is that the ADA uh improvements are not in and of themselves uh are valuable. So that complicated, yeah.
They are, they are CDBG.
That complicated process as well as to what we can put, it is.
But anything in Kane Park.
I have a rant.
Or Barbara Boyd. Or Barbara Boyd, or both QCT.
Cause, cause they're QCT.
Okay, cause a million and a half was over.
So that's, okay.
So to to make it, yeah.
So for instance, I use the.
Accessible.
I use a terrific example, that's not an QCT, but what was applied for for CDBG was Barbara Boyd and Dennis, and so maybe ARPA could supplant what's going on at Barbara Boyd so that the CDBG would answer Dennis.
That makes sense.
And stay at bucket one.
Mm-hmm.
Not be rejected.
Personally, could definitely, anything we can do to make it, I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
Um Director Schuster, after this is all said and done, are there any funds left that are unencumbered? Is there anything at the bottom line that says you haven't allocated or obligated to the monies? This is, it takes care of the thirty eight million dollars and shut.
Yes.
Okay, I'm I'm.
Somebody's gonna. Push more of it from you, so listeners, you know, holding the money.
Lives those spreadsheets.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So just to wrap things up, uh here's a general schedule of legislation, knowing that essentially for the rest of the year, you're gonna be getting different things out of this book by earlier, the nonprofits. Um the modifications and some of that legislation related to them should be coming to you in October. Clarifying the sewer and water or sewer allocation to a sewer and water allocation is another piece of legislation. And in between the budget, that's gonna happen in November and December, are gonna be a whole bunch of related whether there are reallocations or budget adjustments for this. So that's why having the the final final plan, uh is so important because we can, then we can do all of that and get it before you.
Can I point something out? Hate to burst everyone's bubble. I'm not sure that that first reading is gonna happen in November, based off of budget hearing schedules that I've been trying to work on with Tara. If we do, it would be a special meeting that we would have to do on that last week in November. So I just wanted to give you guys a heads up definitely.
I'm glad to know that. Um it's just, you know, October would be better, but it's, that would be pretty quick.
Let me ask one more question.
Yeah.
Director Klink scale.
Mm-hmm.
So we found phase two of the sewer project.
Mm-hmm.
What's after that? The phase three and four or, cause that that doesn't complete the work.
No, phase one and phase two was just a project that we did where we looked at deficiencies throughout the system that where maybe just a section of pipe needs to be displaced and not the entire pipe. So we, that sewer, uh sanitary sewer repair project was just to look at those types of deficiencies throughout the city. And so when we did that, we came up with a dollar amount of almost three billion dollars, and we decided, let's take care of these worst deficiencies initially. We're bidding that project next week, that's about two point two million dollars. And then the the relining is not as urgent as the other things that we found, and we're gonna do that as part of a phase two. But there are lots and lots of deficiencies or issues throughout our system. But we're just trying to tackle the worst of the worst right now.
Thank you.
I I don't, Director Klink scale, I don't remember if you were here at the last meeting, but I brought up that we, you know, we really, I don't really know, I don't speak for anybody else, but I don't really know where we are with clients with consent decree, you know, we haven't had McMahon in for quite a while. I take it you're in some kind of contact with them.
Right, right now where we are with the consent decree that we submitted our IO MCP plan to the EPA, and we're just waiting for them to respond. And once they respond to the plan that we've submitted, oh, about uh ten months ago.
Twenty twenty, oh.
In December of twenty twenty three.
Oh, wow.
Uh I mean, that's when we said, that's the last, that's the last.
That was the last submit on.
That's the last communication that we've had with them. But we've submitted everything on our end, and we're just waiting for them to give us feedback and respond to the plan that we've submitted. And this point, we have not heard.
You know, I don't know if knowing more about that would help council, you know, if it would be determinative, you know, as far as, you know, making a decision about, you know, putting more money here or there, but I I mean, it would be, I think it would be informative nonetheless, you know, but um.
Yeah, and actually, I'm gonna bring that up tomorrow.
Well, we talked about that in the last meeting. Right. But, um, oh, go ahead.
I guess I, I just, just for clarity, if we're waiting on the federal government to get back and what we submitted, what are we requesting from council, I mean, from the the staff now, now, just because there's, there's nothing else for them to report, so that's what I'm just confused about. I just want a clarity.
Are you talking about what I was talking about?
Yeah.
I, I, I want an update on where we're at on the consent decree. Uh I mean, I, I mean, I'd only be repeating what I just said, I don't know if it would be determinative as, as far as like my decision on where I'd want the money to go, but not having a clue as to where we're at on that whole thing.
You mean like where we, but where we, that's what I'm, I'm, cause.
Not, not, not on the, no, Director Kling scale has given us an update on the eighteen million and where we're at with that. I'm talking about like, what's, what else is coming? Because, and what do, what do we need to get ahead of? Because this is a once in a lifetime, I mean, I think we all have beat that to death, but this is a once in a lifetime, you know, money dropping and, and how do, you know, what do we need? Like, like in my thinking, like, wh- what should we do now with this chance? Because everything else, I think, is gonna be general fund. I, I don't know if the federal government's gonna get, maybe some infrastructure money, I, I don't know. But I think it was.
There were millions of dollars that we need to, to spend on our system. Think it was like fifty million dollars over many, many decades and um.
How, how much?
I thought it was five hundred million.
Five hundred.
Yeah, it's like five.
Fifty million, fifty million in the first five years.
Yes, that was like, that was our first.
Fifty million in the first five years. Because initially, if you guys remember, we were gonna pay for it through our rate structure, through our sewer rates. But because of the um ARPA money that came, that allowed us to take care of some of those initial repairs with that funding and not pass on any rate increases to our residents because we had this, this windfall of money to address some of the initial issues that we had.
And to really reduce the going forward amplification of those expenses.
The impact of the rate.
It's a three or, it was a huge return on the investment in terms of reduced rates over a twenty-five year period.
I'll thank you.
I wanted to make sure that our current consultant for ARPA is being paid, the breaker group?
They've been paid through their last bill.
All right, thank you.
And just on that point, we should note that their future payments are not included here because that's gonna have to come out of the general.
Sure.
So if.
Why have to?
Cause you'll be out of.
Oh, because you, you're talking about next year?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah.
So um I wanted to also just mention in, in terms of the consent decree and, and we will follow up with Lou about inappropriate, you know, discussion with council, but there is a page on your website that's devoted to the consent decree and includes all of the SSO reports up through August of twenty twenty-four. Those are updated on a, on a monthly basis, all of the information about the integrated overflow control master plan is there. There is really a wealth of information on that page if somebody is looking.
Thank you.
Director Kling scale, thank you so much for sharing that the Lenox Surry Garage is going to work on that, it's going to start soon. Um talking with folks in that neighborhood, they're a little worried about like uh traffic management during that period. Have we thought through like a plan, like whether, you know, part of Lenox or Surry will be closed, how cars and pedestrians could be impacted by the construction?
Well, prior to them starting, we will do some type of maintenance of traffic.
Okay.
Uh of that area.
Okay. And that was late September, early October? Okay.
Just to finish up, so um our next steps, we're gonna be, if you know, please, um as soon as we can, because um we need to get people to bid on these things and then obviously bring these things forward before you. So these are the ones that we're intending on issuing, we're gonna finalize and enter into contractors, a whole, a whole bunch of nonprofits and consultants and contractors, and then work on the legislation and the budget amendments. Last bullet is, how would you like to um continue the conversation going forward? Do you wanna have another session? Do we leave it to the committee of the whole, because we're sort of moving into the action phase of this discussion phase.
I, I, I agree, we need to move. So in a minute, I'm gonna ask you to go back to the slide with your recommendations and if everybody's okay, we can have a discussion about that. On the consultants under finalized entering the contracts, with Noble and Taylor and, and, and so forth and the hiring of um consultants for that, is that gonna include um helping them with SIDS and merchant association organizational stuff, that kind of thing? Or is it just to do a study on market research? Cause that's kind of what it said, was market research studies.
I'll let Brian speak with more, but this was something that was coming out of the Noble quarter claim studies.
Right, so as part of the Noble quarter, studies, important to have that data to make proper recommendations for you all on how to fund the changes we wanna see at Noble and data.
So for example, a lot, some of what we heard during the nobility quarter um conversations and noble station conversations before that was where's the market study, how do we know that there's even a need for all of this? And so it, it was not an unfounded uh concern, so we wanna make sure that before we start making recommendations for future residential commercial, we have that data, which is not something we do in-house.
Okay.
Right, and when it comes to merchant organizing, I think um like my impression is a long road. When you're ac- ac- asking property owners to tax themselves, right? So that takes a long time and you need the right mix of um business owners also, so we don't necessarily anticipate the same mix will be after we make all these investments. Cause the residents wanna see more resources.
Yeah, and I, and I understand that, it's just, you know, if you just look at the business districts with SIDS and the ones that don't have them.
Right.
You know, there's a difference.
I think there's a lot of legwork into.
And, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't just say that's the only thing that needs to happen, but on the market research, beyond that, I mean, I think people wanna know, like for instance, you brought up the noble um station, not noble station.
Noble.
Noble quarter, yeah, I'm sorry. You know, it's, it's not just the market research, but like, what, what's the, what's, you know, what's the master plan for this? You know, what's gonna go beyond, you know, we know this is gonna be built, but how does this fit into, you know? And I was hoping that would be part of the, the community improvement.
Well, it really is because we started the, we're doing that part ourselves.
I think the market study will inform sort of what kind of.
Thank you.
Um incentives that the city should provide to encourage those businesses that are most likely to occur and the businesses that the residents are most likely to use.
Right, 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 no, I, I see it has to start there, but I think people wanna s- see, okay, how's this?
Right, and market study is not that exciting, but I mean, I think what comes after the market study really is exciting.
Councilman Cobb.
Yeah, thank you, and just to follow up on President Kuda, I think we were pretty clear that we wanted some funding for the, to assist those merchants to have a merchants association that was, that were in the noble neighborhood. And I'm not sure that I'm hearing that any of the programs that we're talking about are gonna assist them in doing that.
Yeah, that certainly was not something that was uh on our agenda.
Well, that was on council's radar when we discussed
It was.
Uh the use of ARPA funds, so we need to do something to assist those merchants in having a merchants association. I understand that, that it's gonna be pushed back to the sit, but we were talking about something different because there used to be a merchants association in that neighborhood and I do believe that they used to receive some funding from the city to assist them. And that ended more than a decade ago, but I, I do recall providing that funding when I was on the uh CAC advisory board. So what can we do to, to have that happen?
Well, the good thing is that we're in budget season, so I think we can work on including that one way or the other as a, a study or a initiative to work on a merchants.
I don't wanna belabor this now, but we did have a conversation with Brian Anderson about this and he, he didn't think it was, at least in that, in the conver- in the conversation we had at that time, I don't, I don't wanna say what he thinks now, but you know, he, you know, he didn't think that that was something that the, your department was interested in. And then there was some talk about maybe one of the CDC's doing something like that. But at the very least, we need to, that, this, I don't expect you to know every part of every conversation we had in, in the, we had so many meetings, it was crazy, but, but we, I, I, Councilman Cobb, this is a good point. You know, that was the intention.
It was.
And we need to figure this out.
Because that's one reason we were so eager about Future Heights, saying that they could actually do it. And then that kind of fell apart, so that was truly a part of the conversation.
I, I think we can commit to looking at it, figuring out a way to uh study it. But just remind ourselves that fitting it into an ARPA allocation, particularly where we are um
With the time, yeah.
This late in September is a tough thing.
Depending on what they need the funds for, the merchants association, this to be made merchants association.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's um depending on what they're gonna use it for, other funding purposes, like CDBG, like Councilman Cobb mentioned. So there's possibilities for funding.
Right.
Once it gets sort of formed and they have somebody to ask for the money, you know what I mean?
I, I mean, if I hear Councilman Cobb, it's like, okay, if for some reason we don't do this with ARPA funding and, and in particular with the community.
We should call it Community Investment Fund.
If we don't do it with the Community Investment Fund, we should have an alternative plan, you know, as a, otherwise, we should, we should hurry up and try to figure something out now with this money if we're not gonna do something.
I think we had the.
Should have been on the Community Investment.
I think we have the staff to sort of seed that, sort of.
Yeah.
To get to a point where they can ask for CDBG funds.
I mean, it.
The way that senior tailor could, you know, in your own circumstances.
It, it doesn't matter to me where the money comes from, but it, it does matter, I think it matters to, to council that we do it.
And it also matters, those folks that sat through all those meetings about the market study that was done, what, three, four years ago on the noble quarter, so is that?
The noble quarter plan, the futurist one?
Yeah, I mean, that information's out there, so you know, people like to see something happen.
Right.
Not another study where we just get put off.
I agree.
That's where this is coming from.
We don't see things happen.
Yeah.
We don't do this just to put it on the shelf.
We recommend that you look into the, the community investment far as the, the uh uh residence portion of it that I sent Dave to you, far as investment.
Yeah, well, that, we're, we're saying that that falls under this assistance component.
Okay.
Obviously.
All right.
Yeah, so that's.
I just didn't, I just didn't want to get lost. Cause I didn't see it.
We're scheduled to go to seven thirty, and we don't have to, but I would like to go back to the recommendation slide, please.
Yeah, and this is the one essentially for the reallocation.
Yeah. Um please start the conversation.
I, I guess my question is, not this slide, but the previous slide, are we holding off on, or slide thirty-one? Yeah, are we holding off on both of those or are we really reallocating? Cause I know you said.
I don't have a problem.
About seven fifty, but I, I just wanted to figure out where we're with that, so that we have an idea if we need to.
I'm sorry, tiny homes and safety?
Yeah, I didn't know if we were having a conversation, wait, waiting on a, a decision about both or one. Um and what we, what the staff can do in terms of any decisions about that, cause I, I know that it sounds like, at least that their expectation was that they would get some kind of guidance or direction on at least one or both of them.
Well, but the seven fifty is on the other slide. Or am I wrong?
The both are integrated into.
Oh, they're both?
Yeah, um we had to make that assumption.
Right.
In making this.
And that's why I wanted to know where we were on thirty-one, even figure out if that makes sense on thirty-two.
Well, we don't know where we are in the lighting.
So let me make a clarification.
Yeah.
Let's get this over with. Cause I'm tired of talking about it. So I am fine with moving the safety lights over, that's fine. Uh the ones, uh the one seventy-eight, I would like for it to be moved to um, what we talked about, the um zoning. To be able to uh be used for different zoning for different areas, but I still want a commitment from council and from the director of planning that we will still use at least two hundred and fifty thousand of that to investigate uh some tiny homes and the possibilities that people are doing in Cleveland and everywhere else.
Wait, not two fifty additional, two fifty total?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
But two fifty, not from ARPA, but from.
Yes.
General fund.
Yes.
Which we will put in our budget request.
Yes, so I, I, I will have no problem if council wants to.
No, I get it.
Yes.
Okay.
Move the lighting over until, you know, the recommendations will follow.
In the next slide. Is moving to here is what you're saying?
Same. So I just love to hear from everybody. Councilman Cobb, you, do you wanna weigh in on the, this slide?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it.
Well, that's weighing in. That's considered weighing in, but.
The allocation, I just wanted to check the numbers out, I didn't wanna tell them something and we know that they wouldn't be able to do these exact numbers, so basically.
I understand.
Decisions, so I'm, I'm supporting it.
I'm fine with it.
I'm good.
Um I mean, the only thing I would say is, is that um I, I think these are all good uses. I, you know, we are gonna have, I mean, I can't say we are gonna have, we, the library board has said that they would um, at, at their Monday meeting, that they would like to meet with us, cause you know, we did, we actually didn't end up meeting with them. And uh I, I don't know how fast this is gonna happen, it's been three day, three days. Uh I heard back, I don't know if anybody's gonna be talking about money at that time. When we were talking about Coventry, we, 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 we've been kind of having well, we haven't, actually haven't had a conversation, but there have been conversations about Coventry Peace Campus and what it would take to save it. I don't know where that's at. It's some, I, I would say it's, it's possible that we could have a meeting where we would be talking about a possible use for some monies, I would say it's just possible.
So it sounds like a money.
Yes.
If, if that's the case, maybe it's, we're discussing here for a moment of what the review of that request might look like. Ie, is it eligible, what, what's the information we're gonna need to be able to properly evaluate?
I mean, there really hasn't been a, I'll tell you what happened, on Monday, the library board met and they said, at the, towards the end of the meeting, uh you know, Mayor Brennan had spoken and, you know, and, you know, most of the board weighed in and said, well, you know, we might consider doing something, you know, if we had partners, I mean, it was pretty vague, you know, I mean, it wasn't but it was, but this is coming to a head, this issue is coming to a head, like right now, some decision is gonna be made. I'm just saying it's, it's in my, it's in the back of my mind, I'm not saying it ought to be in the back of anybody else's mind, but that it would be something I would consider if I heard we could um save this arts and culture hub on Coventry. If there was a partnership between some entities and if it's not something that could be our, our eligible, I don't know, but we haven't, haven't actually heard of.
That's part, yeah, that's part of the dilemma. Um it, it, the other thing that, that I'm thinking about is you're going into budget season.
Yeah.
And um that discussion is obviously very complex. Um and in early stages in terms of maybe forming a partnership, based on my, what I've heard in the past about those discussions. Uh I, it, I'm concerned, like I always am about the timetable and the ability to move forward with trying to move forward on plans and expenditures with the decision we just got from council. Um or the consensus of council um that will come back and bake into legislation going forward. But that, if it's parallel process involving Coventry Peace Campus, just sounds like it could stretch out. That could go past the end of the year theoretically.
Well, I would, I, look, I, I don't, I don't like bringing something this nebulous and just putting it on the table. However, again, if they were to say, yeah, let's meet next week and we could get a quorum, I'd wanna hear it. I'm just saying I would wanna hear, that's all, I meant, I'm just saying this to everybody here.
But just to give you uh some backup, I do think you can uh hold to our end of October deadline. At least it's an internal deadline, so they've got something that they wanna propose that might be eligible and they can get it contracted by the end of October. by the end of of October, and it's something that you'd.
I consider, I mean, it may not be possible and I'm not, and I'm resigned to that.
Feel comfortable.
I'm decide, I'm resigned to that probability. But I did, I did wanna say that there is another use I would look, I would look at if it were, yeah. I'm gonna sound like a broken record, but uh there is a possible future partnership, so wherever there's accessibility improvements needed, which there are instead of East Campus building, C D B G is always a potential partner.
Yeah, it's A D A accessible, right.
Yeah. And and maybe that's the, if maybe that would end up being the answer, you know?
That could reduce some, like, there's some tangential benefits outside of.
Yeah. Right. The the problem is, we haven't had a conversation yet.
We need to know.
And it's not that I I don't realize there are other.
And they seem to have some sort of pro forma, at least some envelopes, pro forma of you know, what improvements need to be made with the roof and
Yeah, no.
and uh a way to finance it, from what I heard from watching council meeting. Maybe so, it wasn't.
I I don't.
That's what it seemed like from the.
No way to finance it, but they do have a list of, yeah.
And they've been wearing off, and you know, featured years ago.
Yeah.
From the last iteration.
Yeah, there's a lot of history. Uh, we'll move forward
Yeah.
with what we discussed tonight, should things change.
Yeah.
And we will look into some type of uh association for the noble area, the businesses.
Um.
Noble and Taylor.
You're out of slides.
Yes, both.
We're out of slides. Yeah, thank you.
All right, I, we don't have an other on the.
There is another.
Oh, is there anything else?
Um, I just wanna know, is anyone looking into, because I would like to um around uh par- uh planning and development, is there anything legislatively coming up regarding uh having uh the structures uh own, business owners who own buildings in the city having inspections, three to five years?
Yeah, the um facade
Yes.
is something that um building commissioner, law and I are all working through to get that legislation ready
Okay.
to come before this.
Okay.
Still a work in progress, but we.
Okay.
But it is in progress, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't have to worry about, cause I was gonna create some or not create talk about with you about putting together some legislation for uh.
Yeah.
We have something that we're.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, hearing no further business, this meeting is adjourned.